Good afternoon and welcome to the February tenth, two thousand and fifteen Richland School District Two Board of Trustees Meeting. Thank you very much for being present on tonight. The Board has just returned from Executive Session and thank you for your patience as always, as we deliberated on some very, very important matters. At this time, we'll stand and have an inspirational moment by the Chair and the Pledge of Allegiance. What really matters in life is for us to do ten things. Number one, love and accept one another. Number two, pray for one another. Number three, tell the truth to each other. Number four, be kind to one another. Number five, bring joy to each other. Number six, serve one another. Number seven, be patient with each other. Number eight, comfort one another. Number nine, forgive one another. And number ten, honor one another. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. You may be seated. Intended to mention that tonight, Mrs. Brill, one of our Board members, will be joining us via telephone, so we want to welcome her. Mr. Manning is getting her connected in a moment and she will be on the line with us via telephone. Thank you all. Thank you very much for being here. At this time, the Chair will entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Mr. Chair, make a motion that we approve the agenda is stated in our Board Packet.
Is there a second?
Second.
Removed by Mr. Manning, second by Ms. Mackey. Any discussion? Hearing none, we're ready to vote.
That's a dollar nine to get out. Yes, okay. Thank you. I'm working on that. She's, yeah.
We're gonna, we're gonna, we'll give Mrs. Brill a vote because he's not able to connect with her right now, but we'll go ahead and log the recorded votes. Yes, I'm, yes.
Hey, Susan, you there?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm gonna turn the volume up here a little bit and you are with us now.
Thank you so much.
Susan, I'll need your voice vote on approval of the agenda. Are you in favor of approving the agenda, Susan?
Yes, in favor.
Thank you very much. Motion passes seven zero. Next on our agenda is the approval of our consent agenda. The Chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, approve the consent agenda for the regular Board meeting today.
It's been moved by Mr. Plank to approve. Is there a second?
There's a second.
Second by Dr. Caution Parker. Any discussion? Hearing none, we're ready to vote.
Susan, are you voting from home or are you voice voting?
I can vote right here.
Yeah, okay, I just want to make sure you were voted in there.
Did it.
Great, thank you. Motion passes seven zero. Thank you very much. Next on our agenda is the faculty focus. Dr. Hamm.
Yes, I'd like to introduce Nancy Gregory, who will be presenting the faculty focus.
Good evening. Students in Richland Two are participating in an arts initiative in combination with and support of the town of Blythewood and Bravo Blythewood. And this is during the month of February and we have with us Michelle Maxberry from Spring Valley High School, who is going to tell you more about that project.
Good evening, Honorable Chair and Vice Chair and all of our Board members and Dr. Hamm. Thank you for allowing me to be here to share what we are working on and we are very excited about it. As you know, we have replicas of the Phillips Collection of the Jacob Lawrence Great Migration Series. And we developed a project to use with our current ninth graders that works in conjunction with Copper Sun by Sharon Draper. And the students have been reading that novel over the past couple of weeks. And so with the exhibit, we decided to have them visit the exhibit and take mental focus of the themes that they could decipher from the images. And we came back to class and had a discussion about those images and those prints. And then we embarked upon a project using a Google app called Meta. And Meta is basically something, it's like a Google Slide, however, you get to add video and voice to it. So it's kind of like WeVideo, a little bit like VoiceThread, but it still has its own little twist. So we decided to embark upon Meta to showcase the talent here. And the students were remarkable. In just a span of a week, they visited the exhibit twice, they created the projects, and they were able to basically do the story of Amari, who is the main character in Sharon Draper's Copper Sun. They did her journey through photos or through images. And so they were able to borrow Jacob Lawrence's style after just visiting the exhibit and never having met him and doing a small amount of research on the paintings. So, and we talked about the style that it used with the tempera and knowing the difference in how this works and what the creative medium was like for him. And we also talked about the entrepreneurial advantages of doing such a thing because his wife was also an artist. So they basically made it a family venture and it became a very profitable venture for that family. And so the students had a very engaging experience with the art. It was something new and refreshing that they had not experienced before, but yet they were able to make it a part of what we were already doing. So they weren't viewing it in isolation, they were actually incorporating into the curriculum something that we were already doing. So it felt more natural, not artificial. So we were very thankful for having that and we also thank you for allowing us to share in this moment. And I just wanted to add one thing before I leave. One of the exhibits here on display, number forty-five, if you were to go to the Jacob Lawrence website, this is actually an interactive game for elementary school students. They can actually click on the images and it has projects that they can actually do even from the comforts of their own home. So I thought that was very nice to have that feature. So it's something that all grade levels can benefit from.
Thank you, Ms. Maxberry. Questions or comments from the Board?
What's that website? I'm interested in number forty-five.
Yes, it is, if you Google the Great Migration Series and it'll be under Jacob Lawrence or Phillips Collection.
Awesome. Awesome.
It's no wonder the students do so well at the State Fair. Their work is incredible. I mean, it's incredible.
We're very thankful that we had the opportunity.
Other questions or comments from the Board? Thank you very much, Ms. Maxberry. Next on our agenda is the public participation session. No one has signed up, however, if there's anyone in the audience who would like to come and address the Board, you can feel free to do so at this time. Thank you. Next on the agenda is voting on the Executive Session items. The Chair will entertain a motion on student appeals. Dr. Caution Parker.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make the following recommendations, please. Student number one, deny the appeal. Student two, recommendation of place student at Blythewood Academy. Student three, Blythewood Academy. Student four, move to deny the appeal. Number five, recommendation Blythewood Academy with Lareda. Number six, recommend Anna Boyd. Number seven, recommend to deny the appeal.
Motion is made by Dr. Caution Parker. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Manning. Any further discussion? Motion passes seven zero. Thank you very much. Next on our agenda is the, under old business action requested, approval of the eight percent funding. Dr. Hamm?
Dr. Miley, Mr. Carter, and Mr. Cranmer are here to address those issues and answer any questions you have about eight percent funding.
Mr. Manning.
Mr. Chair, unless you had something to present, I'm sorry if I was getting around. I noticed the last time when we talked about this, I'd asked a question about the R and E turf, our field that was being put down versus the commitment that I made. I'm sure other Board members may feel the same to Ridgeview. And I see that that field is still in there. Can you talk to me about?
Yes, when I was asked a question last week, I should have gone back in history a little bit. About three and a half years ago, all the athletic directors and all the principals came to me and Mr. Davis at the time and with the request to put artificial surfaces on all of our on-campus stadiums. In fact, Tim Hunter from Spring Valley made the presentation. Mr. Price was at Blythewood at the time. I think Mr. Schmidt was either in transition and leaving Northeast to go to Westwood or was still in Northeast. We told them at the time that we thought the price was between seven fifty and eight hundred thousand dollars per field. And that was not affordable as an eight percent item. Because we now have a little bit, a little bit better price, the staff recommendation is that we continue with the installation of fields until all five high schools happen.
Yeah, my concern isn't so much whether I think that it's okay or not to do that. I just go back to again the comment that when we did R and E, we made a concerted focused effort on Rich and Northeast facilities and I fully supported that. Going into Ridgeview, I told the folks at Ridgeview and the community that I would fully support the same effort into the Ridgeview facilities. And I just, I mean, I know that we, that you said we redo the fields every now and again and that, but you know, we just did the R and E field. I really feel like that I would like to see that money moved over there. As long as that item's in the eight percent budget, I gotta tell you, I'm probably not gonna support the eight percent budget. If we take that out or some modification, maybe willing to do it, but I feel like that's causing me to go back on what I feel like my word was to the Ridgeview community.
Well, if we go, if we'd have done the update first, when you go to the top ten that Ridgeview presented to us, five of the items are fully funded. One of the items, which is the auditorium, is partially funded because we could do the cosmetic work, the expansion, back of the house, everything else on their list is three million dollars or more and is more referendum than eight percent.
Don't we have some projects with some lights in classrooms still to upgrade?
That five hundred thousand dollar line that I have in there is how I fund that. That's how I funded the hallway and the, where the lights had just dimmed over time. We've just about completed that. I just gotta get the lighting engineer back in there to take the readings to make sure the light levels are consistent from the door all the way to the end of that central hallway. But those kinds of projects are done out of that five hundred thousand dollars of general, general maintenance, sounds right, it's probably not wrong, but small capital jobs that I can do.
So there's absolutely nothing else that we could do?
Oh, there's always stuff I can do, but I don't have a six hundred thousand dollar project sitting out there.
I understand that, you know, I'm gonna rest a little bit on principle here. I don't typically like to do that, but in this case I will. As long as that field is in this budget, I'm gonna deny the budget from my vote. Thank you.
Ms. Mackey.
Thank you, Ms. Manning. I know before, I know the school had a list of, of things they needed that they, that they made available before. They had a priorities list that they were supposed to submit. I know that most of other facilities had like phases they worked on, but they were asked to submit their top ten priorities. And so the top ten priorities were asked of them, I know that some things had to get switched around. With regard to the things that they asked and said they needed before, they had to start working with the top ten priorities list. Are those things taken care of or can we have a conversation? Maybe this is not the time or the place, I'm not sure, to talk about the things that they needed before they were asked to start doing top ten priorities.
Back in July, excuse me, they asked for some, there were a number of things, additional goals in the gym, that's been done. They asked the ability to, and that's in the auxiliary gym. They asked to be able to raise and lower the main goals in the gym, that's been done. They wanted a fence around the overflow pond at the end of the football field, that's been done. They asked for higher fence and netting at both ends of the lacrosse field. We haven't done that yet, but we're gonna do that after the lights go in. And that's, that's a small price, not a lot of dollars. The tennis courts were redone, cooling tower was replaced, two Kate labs were completely relighted.
How many labs are there? There were two that were relied, how many Kate labs are there? Another, the Kate hall was pretty dark.
There were two that they were concerned about and we did both of them. And then we redid the parking lot and the loading dock area.
No questions, Ms. Mackey?
Not at this time.
Okay, Dr. Caution Parker?
Yes, I'd like to ask, Mr. Carter, did Ridgeview, did Ridgeview submit an eight percent request?
Not this year.
Okay.
Other questions, comments from the Board? I share the sentiments and I'm, obviously I'm very careful to not try to demonstrate any bias toward any school for obvious reasons, but I do share the sentiments of my fellow Board members as they address the issue of increasing in every way, in every way possible funding for projects that may have made the top ten or any other list before funding the, the artificial turf at Rich and Northeast. I'm sure, Mr. Carter, you remember vividly and I know Mr. Manning does as well, we had a very robust discussion about funding Rich and Northeast at the time. And one of our former Board members indicated the only way he would support the funding of Rich and Northeast was, or in the future was that we'd have to be assured that the money would be there each year before we could even approve the projects. And fortunately, the money was there, we were able to complete it. And I have remembered that because I want to make sure that we use that same principle in, in moving expeditiously towards funding all of the needs now at the next oldest school in our district that's in need of, of significant improvements. And so I guess my point is, even if we don't have a project, a six hundred thousand dollar project at this time at Ridgeview, I'm not in favor of the six hundred thousand dollars for the actual turf at this time for Rich and Northeast either. So other questions or comments from the Board? On a, on a unrelated but eight percent question, I raised the issue last time, Dr. Miley, that any work that requires design work should then have the entire estimate of the project given to the Board before we approve the project, i.e. the media center at Summit Park. By approving the design work for the project, by de facto puts us in an awkward position next year to approve the project. And so I would like to go on record to ask that any project where there's design work involved, that both the design and the construction be submitted at the same time for approval before we will approve funding the, the design. Does that make sense?
Yes, sir. We took those two projects out so we can come back to it with them.
But I wanted to, I wanted noted that so I don't have to find it or catch it next year. I wanted noted that that is the, I noticed they were removed, but that is the approach we would like to see as a Board going forward.
Mr. Chair, can I ask one more question?
Mr. Manning.
At R and E, should I make a recommendation that we approve this budget without the field as part of that? Is there an additional project maybe that they wanted to have done at that school that maybe would substitute and be less money, more towards the immediate facilities or at Rich and Northeast?
Their first priority in their eight percent submission this year was a bus awning in the back, which is funded. Their second priority was painting in the school, which is funded.
Okay, so that, that fifth, so they got their other big ass if we take that field out?
She submitted seven items and we funded the first two.
Okay.
Other questions or comments from the Board?
With what Mr. Manning just said, can we speak with Mrs. Suber before we continue on with the process to make sure that's what she's thinking? She's, is she here? I don't, I didn't see her.
I know, I've talked to her. I have an email from her on the seventh of January, went to know when I was gonna start work on her field, so.
Right, I understand that, but if she could speak on her behalf of her school, that would be great.
So are we asking to delay the vote? Is this an action requested?
Delay the budget, yes.
What would a delay of the vote, would that have any impact, budget or otherwise? Okay.
Would you like for Mrs., uh?
Mr. Chair, make a motion that we table this.
Dr. Suber, too. There's a motion on the floor that we table this action item into future meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Johnson, motion made by Mr. Manning. Any further discussion? Motion passes seven zero. Thank you very much. Thank you. Sorry, I apologize. I apologize. Motion passes six one. Thank you for that correction. Thank you. Next on the agenda is the approval of the bond refunding resolution, resolution. Dr. Hamm?
Dr. Miley is available to answer any questions. You previously had a presentation about this, so it saved millions of dollars for our taxpayers and we recommend that you approve the refunding resolution.
Any questions, comments from the Board? Hearing none, we're ready to vote.
Mr. Chair, make a motion that we approve the recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Manning. I'm getting ahead of myself. Thank you very much. Mr. Manning made the motion to approve the recommendations. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Mackey. Now any further discussion? Hearing none, we're ready to vote. Motion passes seven zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda is the second quarter financial statement under new business action requested. Dr. Hamm?
Dr. Miley again.
Okay, yeah.
Get my exercise. You have in your Board Packet the second quarterly financials. As you know, we produce these at each, end of each quarter. This is a snapshot of the revenues and expenditures to date. As always, we caution you to be careful about making any judgments in terms of cash flow, in terms of expenditures versus revenues, because the timing of both expenditures and revenues are not equal and that mid-year, we are not quite in balance. But if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Manning.
I would feel remiss without my friend, Dr. Bill Fleming, being here if I didn't ask are we on target with where we are with our expenditures?
We are right on target. We went back, we always compare, even though it's not exactly to look at this year revenues and expenditures, looking back over previous years in terms of what we've done, in terms of the trends at this time of the year, we're right on target as far as past trends for the last three or four years. Yes, sir.
Other questions or comments? Help me, Dr. Miley, if you will, on the, I was looking at it earlier today, on the sheet that gives information for the eight percent funding, the capital improvement for, I guess, the current year? I'm not sure what, where it has Fund 521 and Fund 522?
Yes, sir.
Some of the categories, it looks like they're sort of rolling over the same amount of money in the same categories. And so kind of talk me through it a little bit, if you will?
I will if I can get my glasses. Assuming we're looking at that last page.
Yes, sir, that would be the last page. Just you got athletic equipment and band equipment and things like that, that just seem to automatically be rolling forward each year, one hundred and six thousand dollars, two hundred and ten thousand, is that, is that a reoccurring expense that's, that's?
Oh, for the eight percent band equipment? Yes, sir.
Well, not just the band, but the band, the athletics, several of those in that category.
In fact, I'll ask Jack to help us with that.
Yeah.
Yes, sir. Probably five or six years ago, we actually started giving money, eight percent money to the bands. Then we added athletics, I think a year later, and we've added orchestra. So we give them that amount of money and that's solely their discretion. They, they, they spend it, in fact, they're on a deadline right now, or the fifteenth of the month, to have expended all of the five twenty-two dollars. If they don't expend it, then that gets swept up into a general five hundred account. But that is a reoccurring annual expenditure that we've been providing to all the high schools and the middle schools.
And they frequently don't spend it out.
But that's really where the question was going in terms of what happens if they don't and we were gonna give them some more money and they hadn't spent the money from last year yet. Was there a, would they end up questioning?
Well, we sweep it back out.
Okay.
And they don't get it. We try to do it after, before we actually issue the next eight percent, we sweep, try to sweep that money. And believe me, the minute I call them and tell them if you don't spend it, you're gonna lose it, they find a way to spend it.
When you say sweep?
And it's all legitimate expenditure, sure.
You're not doing, when you say sweep, if there is money, where does it get swept to?
Other fund balance or other projects for capital projects.
For cap, okay.
Yes.
We don't move it back into operating.
If, those dollars can be spent on equipment for the band, they can replace whatever kind of band equipment. They can't buy music with it, you can't buy uniforms with it, but you can buy helmets, you can buy bats. Basically durable things would last a year or longer, we consider capital.
So that's where money goes into, basically the administration's discretion is the, what that gets spent for the other projects?
Or for any other project underfunded in this, in this list.
Okay.
The technology money, it seems like technology is sort of like I asked you that question at the last Board meeting about the, the Walkie-Talkers and some of those things. It seems like technology appears in a couple of different places and I see here, we've got almost six million dollars in one and almost six million dollars in the other and the five twenty-one and the five twenty-two technology. And then technology appears in the, in the general operating. So help me understand, Tom, we've got a lot of technology money going in separate, a lot of different places. Why is that?
Is that different? Oh, okay. Yeah, what, the way we've been operating is that we overlap one year on the next year and so they sort of leapfrog like that because of the timing of things like software licenses that are, that don't fit neatly within a fiscal year. So we may have products or software services that expire at various times in the year. So we're matching revenue with expense to pay for those projects and so they sort of overlap from one year to another. For example, this spring, right in the February, March timeframe, we will complete the expenditure cycle from the five twenty-one fund, which is last year's eight percent. And this year's eight percent, which is Fund 522, will extend somewhat into next school year. And that's, that covers, it matches the, the revenue with, with those expenditures.
But then we got another one under the revenue budgeted where you've got nine hundred and five thousand dollars for technology initiative and so that's?
For this current eight percent, excuse me, for the current eight percent that was on table tonight.
Mm-hmm.
Yes, sir. Those are funds from the state.
Okay.
Those were the special technology funds allocated by the state this past year. We haven't received them, we've received about two hundred thousand, but those are for this FY fourteen fifty.
And I guess the question is, the ones you just described, Tom, the five twenty-one, five twenty-two, the six hundred thousand, the nine hundred thousand from the state is earmarked specifically for something other than software licenses and the things you just mentioned or?
Yes, sir. That is the, the state K-12 technology initiative. That's, that's new. This particular brand of that is, is new this year.
Okay.
And that's money being allocated to school districts for two things, either one-to-one computing or for improving your network. And if you'll refer to the current eight percent budget proposal that we have, we're, we're... we're, we're reducing it by nine hundred and five thousand, and that reflects this money here. So, so we've taken the current proposal for eight percent and backed out the, the nine oh five on that.
Thank you very much.
One last thought, comment is that in terms of the expenditures side, they are kind of lumpy. That is, they come in big chunks, not like salaries on a monthly basis. They come in really big chunks, so some of the time snapshots don't paint the full picture.
Mr. Chair?
Dr. Johnson?
I have one question. I was looking at description eight sixty with Richland two drug free. I know we have budgeted a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, but we've only used twenty-nine eighty-one. So why did we place so much money in that budget? Can you explain that? And what is it used for? What do you mean when you say Richland two drug free?
We are looking at the special revenues here.
Yes. Number eight sixty?
Other fish?
Eight sixty.
Yes.
Which probably funded? Thank you.
New grant?
It was a brand-new grant funded in October.
So what are we going to do with the money that's left over? Because we've only spent twenty-nine eighty-one out of a hundred and twenty-five thousand. Does it roll over?
Most of those funds, we, they do have a rollover provision and carry-forward provision, that especially these that start so late and given short notice, most of them have carry-forward provisions so that we can carry it over next year and allocate it next year.
So what have we used the two thousand nine hundred eighty-one for so far? Can you elaborate a little more? To do what? Could you guys provide us a layout of what this money's going to be used for? If not, I would love to see that.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson. Other questions or comments on the board?
Mr. Chair, just one comment to leapfrog off your, um, statement about eight percent money and technology. Um, one of my budget, um, priorities for this year, I think we have some painful discussions that we need to talk about. Um, technology, eight percent money, moving some of that into our general fund. Um, and so I, I just wanted to kind of bring that forward as a statement. Um, it's definitely gonna take some work to get there, but I think it's a conversation we need to have, so since you brought it up, just wanna?
And we have a plan to do that.
Okay.
Very good. Appreciate that. Other questions or comments from the board? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda is a Ridgeview High School update. Dr. Hamm?
Yes, this is the monthly update on the progress that's being made on our projects at Ridgeview High School, and Mr. Carter and Dr. Mac Foxworth are here to answer any questions and bring you up to date on that.
Let me just go to the first couple of slides. I, I know there was, uh, a concern that was mentioned to me last week that the auditorium, I'm, I'm sorry, the media center had not been funded. So that's why I just put these up here to show you what you have funded and what was, you know, fairly large dollar amounts. Let me just tell you that, uh, the artificial surface installation, we think will be done next Friday, weather permitting. Um, it, and I'm gonna show you a, a artist rendition of. I gotta tell you, the actual thing looks far better than what the artist's, uh, rendition is. The, uh, I'm gonna let, uh, I'm gonna let Brenda talk about our meeting with the homeowners association.
Yes.
Chairman of the board? Dr. Hamm, fellow board members. On January the twentieth, we met with members of the Highlands Homeowners Association, and I had Jack with me at that meeting. I asked him to be there so he could answer any of the technical questions in reference to the type of lighting, um, that was going to be used, the footage that it would be across from the property owner's line. And so we had a really good meeting. Um, I think Jack would agree that most of the homeowners left there. There was one that we, um, needed to have an additional meeting with, but we were able to clear up their concerns that they had, and even that, um, one of the residents. We met with him Friday to address his concerns. He seems very happy. And once the, um, lighting project begins, I told him to contact me if there's any issues, concerns. Some of the things are cosmetic, and, um, he agreed that Leland Cypress trees? Leland Cypress tree? I'm really good with this kind of stuff. Um, but he agreed, uh, that's what the resident wanted, and Jack said that that's what we were going to use. So overall, you know, the Highlands, um, Mr. Bother, who's the chairperson of that association, they are very, um, looking forward to the partnership with Ridgeview High School.
And that's the light, the upper field that you, that you originally, excellent, excellent.
Everything is on order. You can see what we said there at the bottom. Uh, I, the field's gonna be done before the equipment comes in. So the minute the equipment comes in, you know, we'll start the installation. I don't wanna go up and trench or anything on the field, it'll interfere with what the kids are doing right now. I did talk to David, uh, Saturday. As a matter of fact, we happened to be in the same place on Saturday afternoon. Um, and, uh, their, their lacrosse season ends on the eighth of April. If, for instance, the poles don't even arrive until the last week of March, if that happens, we may just wait till the eighth of April to start installation rather than displace the team with two weeks left in the season. So we're working with them to make sure there's no disruption. Uh, we've met with, uh, Brenda and her assistant principal and the media specialist, and have gone over the design work. Mostly that's cosmetic stuff, replacing the furniture, doing some lighting, outfit, and painting in there. Uh, similar in the auditorium, um, that's primarily paint. We're doing all the sound baffles, uh, the, some very well-meaning parents extended the, uh, the stage. Uh, it's not really well-constructed, so we're gonna tear it off and put it back on the way it should have been done, uh, as part of this project. We'll redo the stage. So we're, that, uh, we actually had talked to them about getting into the media, I'm sorry, the auditorium, early May, but they have something scheduled for the twenty-sixth of May. So that's gonna delay us about a month. That probably will push us past opening a school to get that work complete, but, you know, we're, we've got that worked out internally, and.
Not just May, it's not the twenty-sixth, it's May the twenty-second. That's the, um, celebration of Ridgeview's twentieth anniversary, which you all will be invited to.
So, and then the last thing is, we're still gotta figure out the locker thing, so whether we, uh, whether we do take some out, or whether we go in and just refurbish all of them in place, we just gotta work that, that, that detail. We got that funded either way, so.
Questions or comments on the board?
Oh, and then the field.
Yeah, I was looking at it earlier.
And the turf, when will they be able to? I know the track, the track team is practicing now. Will they not be able to, will the track name, team not be able to practice this season at all?
David hasn't said it's an issue. They can't be out there because there's equipment moving back and forth. Uh, it wouldn't be safe.
But you're saying the field is expected to be finished next Friday, you said?
I think it's gonna be finished next Friday.
Yeah, that's a question.
Believe it or not, they, that field, if I can get this thing to work. Well, anyway, the field came in, those per- those purple end zones were solid purple. They literally have to go in there and take the letters and cut out the, the purple and install and glue in the letters. There's a hundred tick marks on each sidelines for the hundred yards of the field that have to be cut out individually and in place, and then all the numbers have to be done that way. So we're at the tedious part of the work.
Yeah.
Uh, but given the, the weather forecast over the next week and a half, we think we'll be able to get that done, which is still ahead of schedule. This really was, the twenty-eighth of February was our goal, so.
Yeah, I, I do have one question.
It's Manning.
How much is it for bleachers?
I'm sorry?
What is, what do bleachers cost?
It depends on if you're talking about permanent bleachers.
Well, I'm just looking at that expanse of cement that is sort of the home seating now, and I know one of the requests was to improve that area. I don't know, bleachers, paint, something? I mean, I see this beautiful field, and then the big drab sort of slab of cement there. I was wondering if there was anything we could do, uh, paint or bleachers or something to improve that.
This is not a photograph, this is just an artistic condition.
It's a, it's a Google Earth photograph with a field overlaid on top of it.
Well, the reason I'm asking the question is, there are bleachers there now that's not showing in this photograph. There's, there's a rail there that's not showing, a fencing, so.
Yeah, that doesn't show up in this, in straight down. We actually did put metal seats on the home side as an improvement. Gray concrete, we can paint it, but it just becomes, uh, a maintenance issue over time because the paint won't, just doesn't hold up. There are bleachers you can't see on the visitor's side, there's about three hundred seats on the visitor's side, which were part of the last project we did, uh, summer.
Okay, so that's already kind of been addressed.
That, yeah, and that, that, you know, that's that real steep hill.
Yeah.
You're sort of limited on what you can do on that side. We could expand them a little bit, and maybe get a few more seats on the visitor's side. I think the home side seating is about nine hundred. That's, uh, roughly what our other on-campus stadiums are, roughly.
Is there any landscaping we can do with that open area? With, with that hill?
Well, the, the, you're talking about the two open areas on either side.
Yeah, the, the hill.
Uh, not without a retaining one. Because it, it's too steep to cut with a lawn mower unless you come up.
Well, I didn't mean grass, I meant ornamental trees, something to make it look nice.
Took a bunch of trees off of the hill. Uh, there were a lot of pine trees out there, and the school asked us to remove them, so we've been removing pine trees, uh, for about a six or eight months now. There used to be a good number of pine trees out there.
All right.
I, I think, I think the question that I hear everyone saying, at least the three of us who've been talking, is that, uh, if there's any opportunity for beautification around, th- that's what they'd like, the board would like you to look at in the term. Yeah, that's, that's really the question. Okay. Thank you, folks, for clarification. For me, too. Any other questions or comments on the board? Okay, thank you very much. Next on our agenda is the update on.
I could have one.
Yes, Ms. Mackey?
I mentioned the eight percent money. If the, if the school is already in the budget for renovations, you wouldn't necessarily submit eight percent money, would you not, if they're already being worked in the budget?
Typically, if they've got big projects going on, they would not submit. I, I would, I mean, I wasn't surprised they didn't submit because they knew they had a bunch of money coming from the school.
Thank you.
If I had a, I could have.
Yeah, that's, that's fine.
I had a couple of schools that didn't submit.
That's fine, that's fine.
Good question, good answer.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is the update on the R two I two. Dr. Hamm?
Yeah, we've had questions come up from the board about R two I two, the kinds of coursework we might offer, et cetera, and we thought it would be helpful to do an update. There's a group that meets weekly and has been continuously making progress on getting ready for R two I two to open, and so Dr. Baron Davis is here to give you an update.
So first, let me start off by saying, uh, good evening to Chairman Jackson, members of the board, Dr. Hamm. I'm gonna give you a brief, uh, kind of overview of where we are, and then provide you with an update on where we're going. Just as a reminder, uh, one of our leading premises with the R two I two is a profile for a South Carolina graduate. And again, we've touched on this briefly, uh, before, but we're looking for students who are creative and innovative. We wanna teach critical thinking and problem-solving. We're also looking for students who, uh, to work with students with global perspectives and work ethic, as well as being self-directed and having integrity. Uh, the South Carolina Education Workforce Matchup from twenty thirteen to, uh, twenty thirty was done by the Dollar Moore School of Business, and essentially it states that there's gonna be a projected shortage in the workforce in seventeen years, and there are also chief, um, chiefly in the occupation areas that will require associate's degrees or higher. So our goal, one of our goals is to prevent or, or to, uh, fill the gaps and shortages that will be, um, that will be in South Carolina by providing students with an opportunity to learn in R two I two. So we're looking at an annual increase of graduates of about two, uh, twenty-five hundred graduates who will need associate's degrees, about forty-one hundred graduates will need bachelor's degrees, uh, between twenty thirteen and twenty thirty. So every year, we're talking about trying to provide these, uh, uh, fill these numbers each and every year between twenty thirteen and twenty thirty. So we wanna do our part in our state. Some of the common threads that will be, uh, woven in all of our programs will be leadership, global perspective, technology, creativity and innovation, critical thinking, and of course, collaboration and teamwork. Programs of concentration, um, that we will be focusing at the Institute for Innovation, business and finance, uh, advanced information technology, supply chain logistics, manufacturing, advanced engineering, of course, hospitality arts and tourism. Some sample courses of what those courses would look like. Um, and so when we're talking about, uh, the courses that we're gonna offer, what makes up those courses? What classes would you take in order to make up those courses? So I provided you with a, a couple sample course offerings. Supply chain logistics would be an area. So for example, warehouse manufacturing would be, ware- warehouse management would be one of the courses that students would take. And warehouse management, the asterisk, uh, stands for courses that are under our, uh, CATE programs. Um, warehouse management, distribution systems, business and logistics, and of course, an internship will be in every program. We want all of our students to go through some internship opportunity. Manufacturing, uh, programming areas. Uh, again, this is a CATE, uh, area. We're looking at hydraulics, three D printing, robotics, electrical systems, welding, and of course, internships. Some current programs that we have in place, we talked to you briefly about the SWIFT programming, uh, for Apple devices that we have going on at Millens Tech that started in January, uh, January twenty, twenty fifteen. And upcoming, we have, uh, Johnson and Wells University's Career Exploration Trip, where we'll focus on, uh, introducing students to the hospitality, engineer and business sector, sectors of Johnson and Wells. That will be the focus, and that trip is scheduled for March tenth. Some personnel updates. Um, I, I have two of our, um, new personnel members that are working directly with R two I two here, uh, this afternoon, and if you guys don't mind standing. Uh, we have Ms. Maria Owens, who is, uh, our career development facilitator, and this is a program, or this position is being funded via EEDA, um, uh, for our students, as well as the director, Mr. Kevin Albersy, who will, will begin his, uh, post on February the seventeenth, twenty fifteen. Thank you, guys. Upcoming events, we're planning a tour to BMW, the inland, and the inland port authorities, as well as due south roasters. This is scheduled for February twenty-sixth, and it will, uh, those that will be in attendance will be our school counselors or our lead counselors, CDFs, and our work-based learning, um, personnel. We also are looking at an additional trip to CAPS, um, where we, uh, we have some proposed dates. Uh, those dates will be March twenty-sixth to twenty-eighth, April twenty-third to twenty-fifth, or April thirtieth to May second. And we're only looking at two additional, uh, dates. And so once we have, um, tallied, uh, the availability of all those who are interested in going, we will send out some information about when and the logistics of when and how we're gonna travel. Uh, our next advisory board meeting for R two I two will take place on March the fourth. Future areas to address as we move forward. Programming design, course design and descriptions, uh, dual credit offerings, what are gonna be some of the dual credit classes we're gonna offer? Um, what are gonna be some of the additional courses we want to offer? Uh, what are our certification and apprentice offerings gonna look like? And then what areas, uh, and, and who we're partnering with and to offer those services or those opportunities for our students? Initial staff projections and the continued development of our advisory board. And I stand to answer, answer any questions that you may have.
Questions or comments on the board?
Um, just a comment. Dr. Davis, thank you so much for that. I really enjoyed that presentation. I had an opportunity to speak with Mary Page Boyce, and I think she eased my nerves with the CATE program. I reiterate that I am a former CATE teacher, so I do expect to see that all students are represented. So thank you. Great presentation.
Thank you.
Talk a little bit about where we are with regards to the partnerships. Um, uh, I, I don't see it under the future areas to address, but I, I thought one of the big, big components of this effort will be in establishing those articulated, agreed partnerships.
Yes, uh, and we're continuing to, uh, recruit and, um, solicit partners for R two I two. Part of the advisory board, uh, many of the, all the members on our advisory board serve as partners, uh, but there will be additional partners that will not serve on their advisory board. Part of their responsibility is gonna be, uh, sitting down with us to help us as we develop the course offering, so that's gonna be a really big part of that. So that's gonna be a really big part of that. Uh, Martha, um, is here, and she is working, uh, diligently in the strategic partnership area to continue to, um, solicit and encourage members to join our partnership. And I think we have a meeting coming up with a potential partner that you share with, with us.
We have that with SCANA and, um, we're working with them to develop a satellite course of some sort to, um, and that just to create, you know, you have to talk a lot about what, what they're able to do, what they're, um, not able to do, what we are willing to do and all that sort of thing. We've always, uh, also are, um, gonna talk with Spirex Sarco to, uh, work to create some sort of, um, satellite in their facility as well. The, uh, they don't have the room right now, but just in talking about the things, our vision for R two I two and our satellite courses, um, just letting people know what we're, we're thinking so that when they have available space and they have available projects for us, then they'll, we can come back together and, and nail, um, nail down all the details for it.
I would really like to see sort of a running list of those business partners who are signing on as they sign, as they sign on. Um, uh, and, and because as you remember, one of the things that they made it real apparent out there in Kansas was by visibly displaying all of these partners. And I think that generated the buzz in the community and other people wanting to say, wanting to find out, how can I become a partner? And so I would like was not, not to miss that opportunity and make it in public.
Right now we have twenty members on the Advisory Board, um, SCANA being a new one, uh, Ingenuity SC being a new partner on the Advisory Board. So, um, you're exactly right, we are working very hard to create and talk with as many folks as possible to become partners.
Other questions, comments from the board?
Mr. Chairman? Go ahead, Ms. O'Neal.
Well, I would explain. Um, you've mentioned the business partners, and you've mentioned two. What does an ideal partnership look like? Manufacturing, is it professional business? What, what, what's range are we looking at there?
The ideal partner would be partners that will, uh, allow us or work with us to provide, um, the, or develop the courses for the areas of focus that we have. But they're not, it's not limited to those individuals. Uh, so that will be one, one, um, um, that will be one thing that we will look for in a partner. The second thing would be for any, any individual that will be able to provide our students with an opportunity for internships, uh, provide our students with training, someone that will be willing to come in and serve as a facilitator or a lecturer, someone that's able to guide our students, serve as mentors. So anyone that's in the business profession, in the world of work, that is able to provide our students with those opportunities beyond what a traditional high school setting would, would allow them to do, would be a potential partner and a great partner for R two I two.
Thank you. Part of our Advisory Board, they know our vision, and as they are out in the world talking to other folks, they may be able to say, you know, you really need to talk to Richland Two about what they're doing. And, um, so that's another piece of what we believe in partnerships.
Mr. Manning, thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, so I, I have actually a bunch of questions, but I'll limit it because I know we don't have a lot of time, so, thank you, Bear. Um, the, uh, first I want to, um, welcome Mr. Albersy and Ms. Owens. Uh, really excited to have you folks on board. Um, I know there's a, a lot to do and we're looking forward to having you here full-time to continue to, to develop this area. Um, but I, I'm interested in looking, starting to begin some conversations about some technical aspects, transportation. What are some of the things we need to be looking at there and how do we prepare for our students to have access? Um, I love to look at an opportunity for our charter school, maybe have some space and see how there could be some collaborative effort between the work they're doing and the work that we're doing here. I think there might be some, um, really good synergies there, um, if we have the opportunity for space. Um, and then also, I, I know at the CAPS program, they had some opportunities where maybe they taught a business class, but they incorporated enough math to give math credit. Um, are we gonna have, you know, what's our ratio of certified teachers versus business partners who are teaching? What's sort of a, a teacher? You know, a lot of those details that I know you may not have the answers to, but I think we're kind of getting where I, I want to start hearing some, some of those technical components.
And we can provide, can provide, provide that information for you in, in the next update for R two I two. But just as briefly, we have began, we have begun discussion about transportation, what transportation is gonna look like. Um, we do know, um, initially there will be eleven to twelve graders, so there will be a lot of transportation being provided by students, but we will provide transportation from all, um, five high schools. We do have to figure out the logistics of that because it will require also the coordination of bell schedules. Um, and with this school not necessarily being set to a traditional bell schedule, it should allow some flexibility because courses will also meet, should, could meet prior to the traditional school time and well beyond the traditional school time. In addition to charter schools, we also are looking at how adult air facility will fit into this as well. And that will come in with providing the certification and apprenticeship opportunities for continuing education for those adult education learners within our community and our school districts, uh, as well. So we have had some conversations about that and what that's gonna look like. We do need to get the logistical parts of that done. We are kind of chunking it as we're moving along, and we will have a timeline of, of when these things, uh, should be ready and how they, uh, should be implemented.
Great, thank you.
Questions, comments, and board, other questions? Thank you, Dr. Davis.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda is an update on the Leadership Management and Supervision Training, Dr. Hamm?
Yeah, Leadership Development is one of our nine areas, uh, priority areas for improvement. And to update you on the work of that group, we have Baron Davis and Keith Price.
So I'm gonna skip the introduction this time. Oh, but, uh, uh, Mr. Price and I are here to discuss with you the priority area, Priority Area Six, which is the Leadership Management and Supervision Training. We also have with us four, um, outstanding, uh, future leaders for Richland School District Two that will share, um, some of their insight with you as they were participating in our Leadership Development, uh, programs and series. Um, as you know, part of our primary responsibility as Assistant Superintendents for Schools is the Leadership Development and Supervision of Schools, and also pretty much specifically the development and training of future leaders, current and future leaders in our district. So what does participation look like of those who are regularly participating? We have monthly school-level principals meetings, uh, that serve as leadership opportunities. Um, we have a preliminary goal-setting meeting, so this is when we meet with our principals to discuss their goals for the upcoming school year. Uh, data snapshot review sessions, we reported to you on that, um, earlier this year, uh, as we go through our data notebooks, data notebooks with schools and their principals and the leadership teams to talk about where they are, how their data looks, and what strategies, what strategies they're gonna put in place to achieve the goals that they have set. We've done book studies this year, uh, and one of the last book studies that we participated in, uh, is The Principal, uh, by Michael Fulon, which is an outstanding book that focuses on instructional leadership, but gives kind of a different perspective of instructional leadership. Really talking to principals about leading and being the chief learner in their schools and providing support for those who are, who are responsible for delivering instruction to their, to the students. Uh, we also are in the process of wrapping up our mid-year reviews with our principals, and we're sitting down with each individual principal and going over their, um, professional development, their, uh, principal professional development plan, along with the other eight PDEP standards that are required by the state of South Carolina as we move toward the end of the school year. And then we will have our end of this, end of the year review. And in this end of the year review, uh, Mr. Price and I have decided to have principals send us their portfolios, um, for their, um, uh, for, for their PDEP standards. And then we will follow up by actually visiting the schools and walking and talking with the principals, getting a hands-on, uh, of what they've done from the beginning of the school year until now. Uh, and so we're looking forward to the opportunity of wrapping that up with them this year. And then our Summer Professional Development and End Services. We're in the process of planning our Summer Professional Development for our principals. And a lot of what we're planning is gonna be based on the things that we've seen this year as we've been working with our principals, or working with the principals and their leadership teams, and addressing some of the areas, uh, that we feel they may be deficient in, as well as areas we would like to see a holistic improvement from throughout the district, uh, from a leadership perspective. The first, um, program that we'll talk to you about is the Administrative Development Series, or as we call it ADS. And our target audience for ADS, um, will basically, the target audience is pretty much open to anyone that wants to be in an administrator. Uh, and it's filled with, um, current, um, assistant principal, maybe assistant administrators, it may be lead teachers. It just may be individuals or teachers that just want to learn a little bit more about leadership. Um, we have monthly meetings, and we've had tremendous turnouts in these meetings. I think the very first meeting, we had to cut off a number of participants that wanted to attend, just because of space issues. But we've been averaging, I'd say around eighty to a hundred. So they are, uh, they're showing up and, uh, staying right to the very end. Here are the numbers, thank you, Ms. Price. So as you can see, well, there was some drop-off in January, but that was right after winter break. And December, I think, was right before Christmas break. So we'll see what our February numbers look like and our March numbers. The organization, the organizing committee is myself, of course, Mr. Price, uh, Dr. Brenna Hafner, uh, Dr. Hosendorf, and, uh, Dr. Barry, along with Janine Tucker. And those are our, our current, some of our current principals, and it represents elementary, middle and high school to get the, the leadership perspective from each division on each level. Some of our agenda topics for, uh, our ADS series is being, uh, your leadership demeanor. We discussed leadership demeanor, uh, we've also addressed personal, addressing personal, personnel concerns. We've had individuals from EMO Resources come in and talk to our, uh, aspiring leaders about personnel concerns. Uh, your role in special education, which was, uh, very good. Uh, Ms. Katia Davis, uh, did that, um, uh, presentation for us. Uh, the, the, uh, participants got an opportunity to experience what it would be like, or some of the challenges it would be like with working with a student with disabilities by putting them in a position where they were experiencing a disability and how you would handle that situation. So it was a very powerful activity for them. Ethical behavior and warnings, which is very important. Uh, difficult parent-teacher conferences, how to handle those conferences, and data literacy and goal setting. And now I would like to introduce real quickly our guests, uh, speakers who'll tell you a little bit about their experience in the ADS. We have Quinn Evans and Benjamin Washington.
Good evening, board members. Uh, my name is Quinn Evans. I'm currently serving as the Lead Teacher for Spears Creek Road Child Development Center. Um, prior to this position, I was a kindergarten and first grade teacher at Lonnie B. Nelson for ten years. And then I've served as the Curriculum Specialist for the District's Child Development Programs. And I have been attending ADS, and I was one of the thirty-eight in January. Um, I thoroughly look forward to these each month. Um, when I first chose to attend, it's because I have just begun a leadership position with child development. But I first noticed who would be leading the sessions, and it's current administrators in the district. So I appreciate the knowledge, um, the years of service that they have for the district and their willingness to share that information with us. Um, the first topic on your leadership demeanor immediately struck me because there was a discussion about the difference between a manager and a leader. And that really spoke to me, and one of the books that was mentioned during that session was Leaders Eat Last, and I'm currently reading that. And it really gives you a perspective in all of the, the duties and the responsibilities that an administrator has and that you have to have characteristics of both a manager and a leader. So I'm looking forward to continuing being a part of these sessions. Um, and I also appreciate just the collegial discussions that you're able to have with others who, you know, normally I'm around people who teach four-year-olds all day. So it's nice to be able to share some of my experiences and discuss those with others at other levels. So I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you this evening.
Chairman Jackson, Dr. Hamm, board? Hope everybody's doing alright today? Doing great, thank you. So I'm excited to present to you my experience with Richland Two's Administrative Development Series. This year I've had the opportunity to join a group of leaders and learn from proven success. The Administrative Development Series is a program built for excellence. Together with other leaders, we have learned about various aspects of administration in the district and in the school building level as well. In this program, we learned about special education law. We also learned about different functions in the school building, how to have those different conversations with teachers, adults, and children as well. And, um, this has given me personally access to people who literally shown me how to lead for I am. The, the whole model of the program is to lead from where you are and how to become an effective administrator. Right now I currently teach at ELR, and it has been quite an adventure teaching in middle school. But now I know it's a time where I can, yeah, middle school. Now I know it's a time where we can also shine brightly another way. And it's, I just feel personally that it's time for me to take that step forward as an administrator and continue to make that impact with our, with our children. Uh, programs like Leading Up and Administrative Development Series are dedicated to service and leadership and collaborating with other colleagues, concern with leadership, and student success has been great. And it's for this reason that I am glad to share my experience with you as a potential administrator and as a fellow stakeholder in our district and community as well. Whether it's to learn about special education or our district's goals and objectives, I personally feel that Administrative Development Series and these leadership initiatives should definitely continue on, and I hope I can be a part of that process. Thank you. Thank you.
James?
Yes, Ms. Brill?
Um, I, I think I'm gonna start off.
Okay.
Because it's difficult to hear and, um, I appreciate your helping me do this.
Thank you for being with us this time, Ms. Brill.
Okay, bye-bye.
Bye-bye. Mr. Price?
Thank you, Mr. Jackson, uh, and good evening to everyone. Um, one of the things that, uh, we left off of our first slide for our regular participation is that, uh, part of Dr. Hamm's vision for the role of two Assistant Superintendents was for us to be in the schools. And that was, uh, quite a blessing for us as we came into our new roles because for two people who are very passionate about working with students and with teachers and with administrators, that was a, a welcome addition to our role. So we've, we've relished that and we make regular school and classroom visits on a weekly basis. In addition to the Administrator Development Series, Dr. Davis and I also started talking, um, back in the summer about developing a, a program that was a little more intentional and a little more intense to help develop our principals of tomorrow. So we came up with the idea of creating an Assistant Principal Academy. And for this, our target audience were assistant principals who are ready, willing and interested in taking that next step into the principalship. We created an application process and shared it with all of our administrators in the district. And, but we wanted to keep a very small cohort because we wanted to do a lot of one-on-one, um, work with the individuals and to give them some very direct and specific feedback. Um, like the, uh, Administrator Development Series, the Assistant Principal Academy also meets every single month. The, there were eleven participants that were selected to participate in the first cohort of the academy. And we have six elementary assistant principals, three middle school assistant principals, and two high school assistant principals. Um, the program components for the Assistant Principals Academy, we have relevant, relevant guest speakers that come in and speak directly with them about the roles and responsibilities that they will be expected to take on when they step into that new role, that may be above and beyond their current role as assistant principals. There is also a research activity and an assignment that they have to complete every month and submit as part of their professional portfolio that they are building throughout the year. At the end of the year, they're going to have a showcase of their experiences and for their portfolio entries. Um, in addition, each month, uh, if time allows, we have case studies and in-basket activities where we give them real-life examples. And they are asked to go through a typical response, and then there's a debrief and a discussion about their feedback. Um, there's also a book study that has been our text and our guide throughout the academy so far this year. And the name of that book is The Five Levels of Leadership by John Maxwell. There are five levels, and the first one is positional leadership that comes with a title. You come a title, there's a, a sense of leadership that's associated with that, but you can't stop there. It goes beyond a title. The second level is moving on up into permissional leadership, which talks about the importance of building and developing relationships with the people that you work with. Then on that comes results, the production, getting results. It's okay to have the title and to know the people, but you've got to achieve and you've got to produce if you want to keep your organization moving forward. Beyond that comes people development for Level Four, and that's where you're developing leaders amongst your folks within your school to step up and lead from where they are. The ultimate level, the pinnacle, is creating more Level Four leaders within your organization. And that's what Dr. Davis and I, uh, are trying to do through the Assistant Principal Academy and through our roles as Assistant Superintendents. The agenda topics that we're focusing on each month are directly related to the standards of a PDEP evaluation that every principal is held accountable for. So while we focus on these topics, they also have relevant assignments that they're expected to complete with regard to these specific topics. And we have two participants who are here to share with you just a little bit about their experience with the Assistant Principal Academy. Um, from Forest Lake Elementary School, we have Assistant Principal Chris Dickey, and from Longleaf Middle School, Longleaf Middle School, Ms. Teresa Boyd.
Good evening, Chairman Jackson, Vice Chair Manning, Dr. Hamm, and Board members. I am Teresa Boyd, and I currently serve as an assistant principal at Longleaf Middle School. I have had the privilege and the opportunity of entering Richland School District Two in 2005 as an assistant principal at Blackwood Middle School. I've served at three of the middle schools, Blackwood Middle, Muller Road Middle, and Longleaf. I also came in as a parent of a 2012 graduate of Blackwood High School, a very proud parent, and I've been very pleased with the education that he's received in our district. At this point in my life, now that he's out of the nest, I'm at a crossroads with regard to where my career goes next. And anytime I think when you're at a crossroad, sometimes you'll hear people telling you, "It's your time, you're ready, go ahead." Or sometimes you get that gut feeling, "It's my time to move to the next level." But I need a little more than a gut feeling. I need a more objective way to gauge my readiness, and I have felt that the AP Academy has given me just that. The component of the AP Academy that I feel has been most beneficial to me has been the instrument, the evaluation instrument used by principals and the performance dimensions. Our activities center around those performance dimensions. Our lectures center around those performance dimensions, those performance standards, and I'm able personally to gauge my readiness. And of course, Dr. Davis and Mr. Price are able to gauge my readiness as well. So that has been most valuable to me. The other component of the program that's been very valuable to me has been the book study that we've been doing, The Five Levels of Leadership. And I've gained an understanding that I may have left one school feeling like I was at one level, but then you go into a new climate or a new school, and you start all over. And it takes support, it takes encouragement, and it takes professional development to reach that Level Four, where I am creating teams and building teams of leaders and building teams that get results. Again, I am very thankful for the opportunity to participate in the Leadership Academy. I'm very thankful for the encouragement, the support, and development that I've received from Dr. Davis, Mr. Price, and I have to mention my principal, who's in the building, Ms. Angela Tom. She is one of the most supportive people I've met, and she gives me the opportunity to sit in with her as a new, she's given me the opportunity to sit in with her as a new principal as she takes her steps along this journey of effective leadership. So thank you.
Thank you. I was watching Ms. Tom as you were speaking, and she was giving you the thumbs up, so I thought you should know that.
Ms. Tom also knows that I go off script sometimes. That was her saying, "You did okay."
I have a script. Good evening, Honorable School Board Members, Chairman Jackson, and Dr. Hamm. I am Chris Dickey, and I am an aspiring principal. I've had the pleasure of working at Forest Lake Elementary School since I arrived in Richland Two, and I've served as an administrator for the past 11 years at the elementary, middle, and high school levels in both North and South Carolina. During this time, I've had the opportunity to participate in a number of professional development and executive leadership courses. However, recently, I've had the opportunity of being selected as one of the administrators for Cohort One in the Richland School District Two Assistant Principals Academy. This evening, I'd like to briefly share with you some of my experiences during the sessions of the Assistant Principals Academy. Through the guidance of Dr. Baron Davidson, Mr. Keith Price, our cohort is participating in The Five Levels of Leadership, which everyone has talked about already, written by John C. Maxwell. We've conducted leadership self-assessments, developed leadership goals and objectives based on the results of the assessments, and integrated action research projects, which they've spoken about earlier. But of the projects assigned, the most challenging, and I'll say that for me, and the most meaningful for me was the leadership self-assessment, which we did. It exposed some areas that I think I needed to improve on in order to climb higher on the levels. But it also gave me great insight of others' perceptions on my leadership abilities and potential. So I've developed a professional leadership plan that addresses my areas of improvement, my personal areas of improvement. And each goal that I meet is an improvement for the school and correlates to increased productivity at our school, so that's for all of us. Also, I think we've had, I had the opportunity to participate in the operations of Catawba Trail Elementary School for a day, as the administrators participated in Palmetto's finance visits. So that was a great opportunity for me. As a result of Denise Barth, the principal at Catawba Trail, who's contributed to one of our sessions, and she looked into the cohort and talked with the assistant superintendent, and she thought that some of us would be qualified people that could substitute in her absence. And also having access to two seasoned, experienced assistant superintendents that are far removed from their principal's role is also an asset, and that's one of the great things that I think I've enjoyed having. Dr. Davis and Mr. Price, they both provide great insight and discussions. They give us formative professional feedback and all of our projects, and just good stuff. Finally, for me, this opportunity has been rewarding, because it's rare for us to work with different administrators across the district at each level when we're not working on a specific project. This is more about professional development and personal development and growth. The climate that we have is free of intimidation, is well-balanced with the spirit of friendly competition, innovation, and personal development. So I greatly enjoy this program. I thank you all, and also Dr. Kathy Steck. My principal has been supportive of everything that I've done in this program, so thank you all.
Very much.
Well, they talk about how rewarding it's been for them. It's been equally rewarding for Dr. Davis and I, and they've both been great groups to work with, and we're really excited about the momentum that those two programs have. But Dr. Davis and I are constantly thinking about what else can we do? What's the next thing that we can take on? And so we've already started having these discussions. And one of the things that we've started talking about, and I believe it was mentioned earlier, about our New to Two Orientation Sessions that we have for teachers. Well, we thought what would be a great opportunity is to have a New to Two Orientation Series for new administrators. We have several new administrators that come in, and in order for us to indoctrinate them in the Richland Two way and to help with consistency across all schools, that this was an opportunity that we were going to take advantage of. So the next chapter of our story is developing a series for new-to-two administrators and principals, those who are in their first and second year in those roles. And finally, working on, for next year, we've identified that while we've got an opportunity for our assistant principals to get some intense work about preparing to become a principal at the next step, we're going to create a similar program for those folks who are interested in becoming assistant principals and have some intense programs, a selection process, to get them ready, hopefully, to take the next step or their first step into administration with some very targeted activities. And at that point, Dr. Davis and I will be happy to answer any questions, as well as our four volunteers who came to speak.
Thank you very much. Questions or comments from the board?
Mr. Chair, I have a few questions. First, the Organizing Committee, how was, how did you all decide on which principals would be a part of that? And I noticed there was not a middle school principal represented. That's the first question.
You noticed that Dr. Brenda Hafner was on that committee, and she was
A normal middle school.
And she was a member of a similar program that began last year, so she had the middle school perspective that continued. This past summer, at our administrative in-service, when Dr. Hamm unveiled her nine priorities, one of the things that we solicited was for our members that were in the in-service to sign up for things that they were particularly interested in, would like to do more work with. And the folks that you see on that organizing committee were the folks that volunteered and said that we would like to help work on a developmental series for this priority.
Okay, if we can go back and see if we can get a current-serving middle school principal, that would be great.
That's one of the things that we've already discussed, and that will be in the works. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, the other thing is, I don't want to send the message out to other inspiring principals and assistant principals that if you're not a part of this academy, that you don't have an opportunity. So we need to make sure that we get that out and get it out very clearly to those who want to be a part of the administration team in Richland Two
Absolutely.
But just didn't have an opportunity.
That was a concern of ours as well, whenever we unveiled the program and rolled it out. And these folks can attest that in the application process, it is spelled out very specifically and clearly that selection into this program in no way entitles or guarantees that opportunity. These are folks who want to take those steps personally to prepare for the next level.
And one final thing, I want to say this to Ms. Board. You were seeing that things change when you go to different schools. Remember also your leadership style would change as well. So, thank you.
And Dr. Davidson, I just wanted to add that as well, that's why it's really important for us to work with our current principals, for them to, to work with them in the development of their assistant principals and assistant administrators, so that everyone's getting an opportunity to get professional development and an opportunity to move to the next level of leadership.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson. Other questions or comments from the board? Question. Based upon what I'm hearing tonight, who actually will be doing the principal evaluations? We, Mr. Price and I are doing the principal evaluations, and they're divided by the clusters that the schools have been divided into under our umbrellas of supervision. So each one of us has a cluster of schools, and we are working with those principals within our clusters, and we're doing the principal evaluations for those principals. And you will then make the recommendation to the superintendent? We will make the recommendations to the superintendent. During the mid-year evaluation process, once they've met with us, they're also meeting with Dr. Hamm as kind of a closeout to that mid-year evaluation, where she's asking them how things are going and getting some feedback from them, as well as providing them with some guidance as well. So we've kind of made it pretty comprehensive, and then the next step will be to then meet in the final and then discuss whether or not, you know, we move forward. But I must say, all of our principals are doing well, but there are some things that we are working to address, but they are doing well overall. And is there, is there a weekly, bi-weekly meeting with all the principals of the schools with you two? We have a schedule that we use to visit our schools. Most of the meetings that we have with principals are in their buildings in their schools. Is there one meeting with all the principals and the two of you? And when does that happen? Yeah, we have elementary, middle, and high school, monthly meetings.
Monthly?
Yes, sir.
There's a meeting once a month with principals following a board meeting. And on the week that we don't do that, we have a meeting with what we call our key leaders, which is all of the principals, as well as key leaders from the district office.
So if you think of it this way, once a week, we have key leaders meeting, and then we have principals' meetings another week, and then the other weeks, there are division-level meetings. And at those division-level meetings, Mr. Price and I attend those meetings for the elementary, middle, and high school principals. Thank you. Other questions or comments from the board? Thank you very much. Next on our agenda is the Accountability Report. Dr. Hamm?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. The board asked us to come back with a report on what we do to assist schools that dropped in their ESEA accountability ratings. And we have Nancy Gregory and Jeff Potts to do a presentation. But before that gets started, I want to take you back to the model that we had, I'm looking for a slide to change, for improving schools. And I think the, one thing I want to say before we go into changes in the report card ratings that they got from the federal government, the ESEA grades, is that I think one part of the culture in our school district that we continuously try to foster is this idea that everybody, regardless of your grade, always has room for improvement, and that it's our responsibility to look at ways that we can bring those improvements about, and that everybody in the organization, wherever they are, has a responsibility to be learning how to do their jobs better and continuously improving what we do at all of the schools. So this has kind of been our model for improving pedagogy and student learning. But, you know, the key areas here, professional learning, continuous quality improvement, leadership and support, I think you've heard some of the kinds of things that go on at the district level for every school. And I'm going to start with leadership and support, just quickly go through some things. But you can probably remember that last year, you added curriculum coordinators. Those people go out and work school by school to try to help improve teaching and learning curriculum efforts that are in the schools. And then, of course, you just heard, we've reorganized at the district office. We've added the assistant superintendents, and their focus is on knowing schools individually, providing leadership and support at the school level. In addition, as part of the work we've done on the Common Core, we've established leadership teams that are well-trained, and that are, at each and every school, there's a leadership team to help support teaching and learning. Continuous quality improvement. We're using data to inform our decisions. There's been an increased emphasis on that. And there's also been an emphasis on a mindset that we all need to be looking for ways that we can improve, that we need to be asking for and using feedback, asking for and using help, so that we make strides every day in what we're doing. And then finally, in the area of professional learning, we really have beefed up our professional learning opportunities in a variety of areas. We have concentrated on making sure that our teachers know how to teach, and that we increase opportunities to learn the state standards. But some of that has been very focused on improving academic achievement, but we know there are a whole host of things that underpin that. We've worked in those areas as well. And we've done fairly extensive professional development on formative assessment, which we know is a key ingredient. It's doing that formative assessment, providing feedback for improvement. It can really make one of the biggest strides forward in terms of improving student achievement. Those are just a few high-level examples, but I do want to assure the board that we're working with everybody on making improvement, and that it's all of our responsibility to do that regardless of report card grades. But then I'm going to turn it over to Jeff and Nancy.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, a little history lesson here tonight. Annual Progress, or AYP, was one of the cornerstones of No Child Left Behind. AYP is a measure of year-to-year achievement on student assessments. Under No Child Left Behind, the goal by the year 2013-14 was that all students within all subgroups would be performing at the proficient level in ELA and math. One of the challenges towards the end of the time when we were working with AYP was if schools missed even one subgroup in their performance, they were labeled as a not-meet school. Because of this, by 2010, 2011, nearly every school and district within the state of South Carolina was labeled as a not-meet school or district. Under No Child Left Behind, children who attended a public school that were labeled as not-meet for two or more consecutive years had the option of moving to a school of higher performing. In July of 2012, the State Department of Education was granted a waiver from several requirements from Elementary and Secondary Education Act. One of the requirements of the ESA waiver was adopting a new system to replace AYP, an accountability system that would help the state identify focus and priority schools. The state ended up adopting ESA letter grades with the thought that they would be easy for the public and the community to digest. However, there have been a couple challenges in interpreting some of those letter grades. The first is, the method used to calculate ESA letter grades is very different than that of AYP. What I mean by that is, AYP looked at or targeted the percent of students that met a specific proficiency level. While in ESA, we no longer look at a proficiency level, we look at an average scale score across subgroups. In addition, there is already a parallel accountability system that exists within the state. The report card system has the same number of outcomes or levels as the new ESA rating system, takes in the same inputs, yet sometimes those outputs that the two systems create can look very different. In the packet, I included some really dramatic examples of what those schools can look like. ESA also combines two different constructs into one, proficiency and growth. So the idea is, if a school is a B school, are they a B school because of their proficiency? Or are they a B school because of their growth? Or is it because of both? And that's one of the difficult things to kind of parse out with ESA. The report card system that exists measures both of those uniquely. The report card system that exists measures both of those uniquely. One of the other challenges within the ESA, interpreting ESA letter grades deals with the methodology changes that have occurred from 2012 to 13, 2013-14. There are many changes that have occurred over the period of time that make comparing one year's data with another year very difficult. An easy example of that would be the increase in the number of students, the decrease in the number of students needed for a subgroup to count for or against a school. I give you this information tonight to let you know that ESA is just one of the indicators that we look at here within Richland too to help, to determine the, how well a student is do, how well a school is doing or the health of a school. The ESA itself offers us a different glimpse than the report card ratings do. And there are a number of, if you'll notice also within the report, there are a number of schools that we have in the district that are performing at a very high level and are growing on one or both of those different rating systems. I'd like to invite up Ms. Nancy Gregory to discuss the rest of this.
In your board packet, we've provided a pretty extensive report from our department. And what we're going to do is just piggyback on what Dr. Hamm talked about from the learning framework earlier in these five areas and some of the work that we've done. Under professional learning, from individual coaching and modeling in classrooms to PD for grade levels, PEP sessions, and collaborative planning half-days to address the needs of students. You can see that our professional learning is pretty extensive. Under resources, we wanted to highlight a couple of examples. We have offered graduate courses to meet the needs of our teachers, but also specific supports for school initiatives such as PBL, STEAM, and STEM, which make our schools so unique. Under leadership development, Dr. Hamm talked about continuous quality improvement. We talk a lot about building capacity by developing lead teachers in our content areas, but also, as Dr. Hamm mentioned, school leadership teams of administrators and teachers along with principal, PD, and coaching. Under systems development and support, we talked about earlier providing quarterly school team meetings with support and coaching for school PD plans. In addition, systematic observations to collect and analyze school data. But we're very proud of the evolution of our department with the addition of the content specialists who provide or continue to provide intentional work in targeted areas at the elementary, the middle, and high school levels. And that's been due to your leadership. And then other, just a couple of others we wanted to highlight is the specific support for our first and second-year teachers with our instructional coaches and also the support for implementation of legislation, one of which is Read to Succeed that we talked to you about earlier, and the hiring of the elementary reading coaches. So again, just a quick snapshot on a pretty extensive six-page report. Do you have any questions for us?
Questions, comments from the board? Mr. Chairman?
The, and I was one of the ones that asked for this report. This is always an area that I struggle with. I understand the complexities that go into what makes up a school grade. I think, however, that the issue, you know, as a parent is when I look at this and I look at my middle school and it's rated as a D, I'm not comfortable with my child there. They may have an excellent education and opportunity. I understand that we individualize the education and I think that we're on the right track with our professional development. From a board perspective, you know, I really expect to see some alarms and sirens go off though at certain grade drops or other things. And it could be, in some cases, because of the change in the way that it's calculated. However, some schools didn't change with the change in calculation, the way that you provided that. So, if the change in calculation, maybe it was because they were very close to, you know, one level or the other, but it's still a concern when you see that drop in the grade. And it shows that there's something there that needs additional work. I noticed a lot of the remediation or the plans that you gave us, a lot of it looked very similar from school to school on certain grade levels. And I understand that a lot of that are fundamentals that will, will help. But, you know, even when I get to middle school and, you know, I've said for a while now and I think everybody agrees, we have some middle school issues and I look at our middle school grades and I look at where we are. You know, I just expect to see a lot more work and communication with us as a board on incremental steps and where we're going and not long delays, you know, when we see the grades versus the fact that we have an issue. If we have a school with the D, I'm sorry, there's an issue. It's not a, that's not a calculation error, that's a problem. And we have to make sure that we're doing the things that we need to do in a timely manner and communicating with that is, communicating those things with us as a board. Because at the end of the day, parents are simplistic. I mean, we don't, you know, I'm an IT guy. If I want to throw, you know, all kinds of IT terms at somebody, at the end of the day, they don't care. I want to log on my PC, I want to get to the internet, I want it to work. And it's the same thing with our parents and the way that they read the report cards for our schools.
And we do work together as a team and we do have targeted interventions that we are working on in addition to working with Jeff's department, also with the assistant superintendents.
And I just want to make sure, we shouldn't be afraid to expose our sore points. You know, I think sometimes, you know, we do the PR thing and we talk about, you know, we're a great school district and we are. But where we have weaknesses, I mean, we've got to just take those head-on, have open and honest conversations with us as a board. And in public, you know, have these conversations to talk about the fact we know we have weaknesses and that we need to address them and that we're not sweeping the dirty, you know, putting the dirty laundry, you know, in the closet so nobody sees it, even though we may be working on whittling that down. So I, I just want to make sure we're addressing it. I mean, it's a concern for me, as I've said, when people are buying homes and deciding where they go, they're going to pull up Trulia, they're going to pull up some of these other websites. And often, those grades that they assign to schools are based off of some of these scores regardless of the calculation that goes into it. And I think that has real impact to us as a district and the future of our district. And so I want to make sure that, that while we understand the issues with it, that we also understand the importance of continuing to bring those up and work on them. I know you are. But again, I just don't want to wait too long before we get some of the details behind some of our schools that really need some extra work and support, whatever those issues may be.
Thank you, Mr. Manning. Other questions or comments on the board? I think one of the challenges that I have is just simply making sure that after a concerted effort in those areas, in those schools where they have areas of difficulty in reaching the desired student achievement levels, that we then have the hard discussion. We've done that in some cases in the past, but in some cases, we, in my opinion, almost waited too long. We waited 14 years before we made a decision to make administrative change. And then in a matter of two years, we see the immediate results of that. I don't want us to wait 14 years for other schools. And I agree with Dr. Hamm, in theory, that in fact, all of our schools deserve our attention. But those schools for which there are obvious deficiencies in student performance need our immediate attention. And as I've used the phrase in the past, we need to be focusing in on those schools like a laser. Because I think regardless of what metric you use, the results are what they are. And if those results indicate that there is a problem in student academic performance, then we need to be paying particular attention to those schools. And after a while, if we've not seen the desire, reached the desired results, then we need to have the hard conversation and the hard discussion about what's next. And I want to be real clear about that. Because I think that the challenge in the past has been, I would echo what Mr. Manning has said, and that's been to the board to have to feel as if it's pulling data and information out to find out where we really stand with regards to student performance. And not only just where we stand, but what are we doing as a result of that? And this is not a tack on either of you who've done a great presentation. I just want to be real clear, our desire is to make sure that we are clear on where we have strengths, and we are, but we also want to be clear on where there are weaknesses in our schools and specifically what we're doing specifically for those schools. Other questions or comments from the board?
Mr. Chair, may I have a comment?
Yes, you may.
I just want to make sure that I clarify what I said. I absolutely agree that we have schools and you could, we could go through school by school and say, this school really needs to work on math or reading or whatever. We know we need to do that kind of concentrated effort. My remarks weren't meant to sound like we're going to help everybody and that's all we need to do. But I do think it's also an important thing that no matter how well you're doing, you look at your strengths, you look at your weaknesses, and you always try to get better at what you're doing. So I, we're not doing that just exclusively for schools that have a problem. All of us need to grow up. I hope that clarifies it. I don't disagree with your statement at all.
I don't think there's any disagreement. I think we're on the same page. It's just a matter of approach to making sure that those, those, those students, those schools that have a cut, we put a band-aid on it, and those schools that are hemorrhaging, we do something a little more serious. That's really my point, academic. Okay, other questions or comments on the board?
Mr. Manning? I wanted to just add a quick comment. You know, I also am not afraid to turn the lens, you know, on myself or us as a board. I know we're working through some training sessions right now to get us more familiar, intimately familiar with parts of the district. If there's additional training or thoughts that we may need and, you know, data, understanding data or looking more in-depth at what you're doing, you know, I would hope that those pop up on some of our training opportunities so that we can also strengthen ourselves and be better partners in helping to get us there. So I don't want to put it all on y'all, so to speak, but, you know, make sure that we're all working together to get there.
Other questions coming from the board? Thank you very much. Next on our agenda is our agenda items for our February 24th meeting, which will be held at Lonnie B. Nelson. Dr. Hamm?
We will begin the February 24th meeting with a student focus featuring the students at Lonnie B. Nelson. We'll have a report on revenue estimates. We hope we'll have new and better information about what potential revenue we may be receiving for the 15, 16 school year. We'll bring to you the final piece of our calendar proposal, which is the half-days for, elementary schools for the 15, 16 school year. We did an IT security review. We have the findings that we'll bring back to you on the 24th. And we have a proposal for K, 4K early childhood programming and a funding source for that.
Other recommendations or requests to add to the February 24th agenda or a future agenda from the board? Yes, Ms. Mackey?
I'd still love to hear more about career prep, degree requirements, and things of that nature.
Absolutely. Thank you, Ms. Mackey.
Mr. Chair, I would like for Mr. Garrett to talk with us more about the teacher transfer. I've gotten quite a few calls from particular schools about teachers being able to transfer. And I would like to know if he can provide us with a list of how many teachers requested transfers last year and how many were granted. And then too, for this year, what is the date for the teacher transfer request? Have that passed or is that coming up? Okay, then I can hold off and you can just combine the two together. Maybe not the next meeting, but the one after that. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson. Other requests from the board? I know that Mr. Plank and I had a conversation last week. And one of the things I think we probably, it's probably a good time to do, and that would be to, particularly with new board members on now, is to revisit and have a discussion sort of about the vision and the mission of both the board. And because I know Dr. Hamm, several things were mentioned tonight in referencing the priorities. And I'm not sure that all of the board members are familiar with that. So we probably want to have that discussion again in the very near future to help bring everyone up to speed with regards to where we are with how that came about and what the, what our vision statement is and what our, what your priorities are as they are connected to that since we have new members on. Other suggestions or recommendations from the board? Thank you very much. We're now at the second public participation session of our board meeting. And anyone signed up for this as well? However, if there's anyone in the audience who would like to address the board, you may feel free to come to the podium and do so at this time. Thank you very much. Finally, we are at the, next on our agenda is our board and superintendent comments. I'll start with Dr. Caution Parker.
Okay. I really enjoyed all the reports this evening. I think it was a great faculty focus from Ms. Max Berry. I hired her as a first-year teacher at Dent Middle School many, many years ago. I want to thank you for all the informative reports, especially the R2Y2 and the leadership. You know, that's where my heart is with leadership. And I just want to say, say this about our accountability report. I believe, I firmly believe that the administration is heading in the right direction. I do believe they know what they're doing. I do believe that we need to be, have, have more information to be kept informed. But I am committed to Richland School District too and the direction in which we're heading. And I do believe that we have focused leadership that will take us where we need to go. And thank you for all of your hard work.
Thank you, Dr. Parker. Caution Parker. Ms. Mackey?
It's late, so I'll be brief. Thank you all for being here, especially the community people who are here. Especially appreciated Ms. Max Berry, Ms. Quinn, Mr. Washington, Mr. Dickey, Ms. Boeit. It's good to hear from the people that comprise this district. I always enjoy your perspectives. I appreciate that.
Thank you very much. Dr. Johnson?
Yes, I'm tired. Actually, all of the reports were very well-presented tonight. I want to thank you for that. Also want to say to Ms. Beaman, thank you so much for allowing us to be a part of your Read-End Day. Shout-out to Mrs. Oliver's first-grade class board allowing me to come in to read to them. So kudos to Mrs. Oliver. Also, I want to say congratulations to Ms. Mackey's daughter, Fades Mackey, who won Miss Ridgeview over the weekend. And thank you so much, I'm tired.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson.
Thank you.
Mr. Plank?
I do see weary eyes, so, including mine. You know, it's been a night of leadership and that's really, really neat to see, especially in a time when succession planning is going to be so critical. And I love the leadership initiatives we have for our assistant principals, for our teachers, and that's so, so important. And the theme is that service leadership. And that's so critical and that listening leadership. And I heard that management versus leader, boss versus leader, so I love all that. And I'm excited to know that we're being proactive in that regard and seeking out our future leaders as well. I want to echo the chairman and vice chair about the need to make sure that we are taking a close look at our academically challenged schools or the schools that are given these grades that we're concerned about. And I know it's very convoluted, at least from a new board member's eyes, it seems that way. But I do want to make sure that we're identifying those and hitting them straight on. And then finally, thank you for the testimonies of the, of the teachers and APs who are here tonight. And thank you for all you do and Harry and Jack for your reports on the budget. And that's very detailed information and appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Plank. Mr. Manning?
Mr. Chair, I want to thank, you know, we see a lot of same faces out in the crowd all the time. I appreciate you taking the time to be here and really listen to what the board and the administration is saying so that you can be well-informed to bring that back to your schools. I know it takes a lot of extra time out of your schedules to be here. So thank you and want to apologize, I had to step out a couple of times. Tomorrow's my wife's birthday and my daughter was calling me repeatedly to make sure that I got everything I needed to have for tomorrow lined up with cards and wrapped gifts and other things. As you know, a nine-year-old and her mother is very attached. I do apologize for stepping out, but wanted to make sure they were, she was safe and okay.
Thank you, Mr. Manning.
But, and thank you for the reports, great reports tonight.
Dr. Hamm?
I'm going to try to be quick, but I do have several things I just feel compelled to mention. First of all, I had the privilege of being at the airport this morning with a group of other enthusiastic educators sending off Terry Butts to go to Washington DC. She's one of five educators from across the country who have been selected as Horace Mann Awards for Teaching Excellence recipients. And she's in contention to get the Member Benefits Award for Teaching Excellence. One of those five will win that prize. It's a $25,000 prize. And Terry is fabulous. I want to wish her the best of luck. And it was great to send her off that way. So anyway, very, very excited for her. And then I want to mention that earlier this evening, our district was honored at the United Way Awards Reception. And for the second year in a row, we received the Chairman's Award for the Public Sector. That means that we were the- Public Sector. That means that we were the highest, we were, we gave, did, raised the most money in the public sector. And I'm so proud of all of our schools that contributed to that happening. I don't have the dollar amount, but I know it was over $100,000, which was a new breakthrough amount to make. And I want to say it was a little over 102. Libby's nodding. I think that's, that's the right amount. And they want to come to our next board meeting and present that award to the, to the board as well. We had our first Shadowing Students Day last week, and it was great. We had about three people from every school who shadowed a student all day long. And we heard what it's like to be a student and sit in a chair most of the day. We heard about cafeteria food. We heard about what it's like and felt what it was like to be a student. And I want to say that the student who I shadowed asked if he could shadow me on Friday. So I had my own shadow on Friday, which was more fun. It was great. He's a wonderful kid. So that was a terrific experience. And I think everybody left knowing more about, you talk about continuous improvement, things that we can make, do to make our experiences for our students better in our schools. And then it was just a great week last week. But Friday and Saturday, I went to the South Carolina Music Educators Association meeting. On Friday, the Spring Valley Orchestra and the Ridgeview Bands performed. And I wished everybody in this community could have heard them. They were fabulous. On Saturday, the Middle School Honors Band performed. They were full rooms of people to hear them. And I think at a time where a lot of people are not doing as much with the arts, the incredible arts programs we offer is something that this board should be proud of. And the work that was displayed there sets the bar high for everybody in South Carolina. They were absolutely amazing. And then the last thing I want to mention is that coming up next week is our annual retirees luncheon. And it really is always good to see former employees to come back and get together. And it gives you a real sense of what it is to be Richland Two family because they stay Richland Two family. So looking forward to that.
Thank you, Dr. Hamm. I too had the privilege of going over and having the opportunity at Lonnie B. Nelson to read and got to read two of my favorite books. And I thoroughly enjoyed, I'm sure I enjoyed reading to the students more than enjoyed listening to me, but I enjoyed it. It was great. One of the things I would like to say as we close our meeting tonight is that I don't think that you become a world-class school district and a great school district and maintain that status without doing a lot of hard work and a lot of heavy lifting and asking tough questions and difficult questions. And I think that's what I got on the board to do. And that is to make sure that we maintain the level of competitiveness in the 21st century that we had in the 20th century for all of the schools in our district. And that every school reaches that mark and that no school falls short because of something we didn't do for them or on their behalf. And so I want to thank everyone in here and everyone out there who's working as hard and as diligently as you possibly can to make sure that we reach the mark and that every child in our school district is able to walk away with the quality education that they deserve and that we rightly deserve to give them. So thank you very much for your hard work. At this time, the chair will entertain a motion to adjourn. Mr. Manning?
Yes.
Ms. Mackey? We are adjourned. Thank you very much.